Welcome, everybody, to the April 21st, 2020 meeting of the Cupertino City Council. As you can see, we're conducting this via Zoom teleconference. Madam City Clerk, can you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Chow.
You're muted.
I'm muted.
Okay.
Councilmember Sinks.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Councilmember Willie is not here, I guess.
Vice Mayor Paul.
He's here.
Hello, I am here.
Okay, and Mayor Sharp.
Here. Okay, um, let me go back to my agenda on the other computer. So, Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone for oral communications?
Mr. Mayor, I don't do not, I have not received any email comments, nor do I see any attendees.
I see Connie Cunningham with a raised hand.
Oh, I apologize, yes, um, yes.
And I see Mihai, Mihai Befo with a raised hand. So, welcome Connie. We'll allow you to talk, you have three minutes.
Mayor, can you mute everybody else? There's somebody that has noise going in the background.
Okay, um, hold on, let me see how I mute everybody here. Okay, I will mute Liang. Okay, oh, John is here now. Um, yeah, everyone I see is muted except for Connie now. And myself. Okay, um, welcome Connie.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, and staff. Continue to thank you for your service to our community while we're under this shelter-in-place order. I'm Connie Cunningham with the Housing Commission, but speaking as myself only. I have just sent an email to the City Clerk with a URL that I would like to have presented, just the URL itself. Um, I have two things this evening that I would like to talk about. Number one, since the stay-at-home order was extended, um, was extended to May 3rd, there are two rent payments due during, during this economic downturn. Many actions are happening at the federal, state, and county and municipal levels, but in spite of all that is being done, nonprofits still need donations from people like you and me because there are gaps in legislative coverage. I ask you and all who are watching online to give generously to those who are serving people in fear of losing their income. I'm a regular donor to West Valley, and I know their work. Can you make a commitment tonight to click on this link in your browser and give generously? I'd also like to make a separate comment. We have a way to help people directly. I'm talking to my friends about paying their hairdressers and barbers, as well as house cleaners and yard workers, even though these workers must shelter in place like the rest of us and cannot provide their usual services. They are closed for business, and who knows if or when they will be able to reopen. Um, during these times, I have read a quote that we can't help everyone, but everyone can help someone. If your own income has not been impacted by loss of job or wages, reach out to your own service providers. Pay them what you would normally pay them, or as much as you can. This crisis will end, and we will get through it together. And do I have any more time? Mayor?
Yes, you have one more minute.
Okay, because another thought that we have also done is, in addition, uh, if you have a favorite small restaurant where you have dined many times, but you're afraid they may go out of business, you, like me, may also be afraid to even take, get takeout because you're in a high-risk category. One idea is to write a check to that small business owner for the amount of an average meal that you have already enjoyed there many times. If you want to dine there after the downturn is over, it is something you can do to help tide that business over. Not all businesses have those little gift cards and things that you can buy, as has been suggested in another venue. So that's another way, um, that if your own income has not been impacted, please reach out to these small businesses that need, um, your help now. And thank you. Again, we can get through this if we all work together. And that's all.
Let me unmute. I see three other participants. Um, Madam City Clerk, can you remind them how to raise their hand for oral in case they wish to speak?
Yes, if you're calling in, please raise your hand by pressing star nine.
Okay, welcome, welcome, Mihai.
You may speak, you're unmuted.
Is she unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay, that's less than ideal, but I'm gonna try. Uh, so my name is Mihai Befo. I've been Cupertino resident for almost forty years, four zero, since nineteen eighty. I would like to share my screen if possible.
Uh, no, that's...
Can I share my screen?
No, you're, um...
If you'd like to present an item, please email it to cityclerk@cupidino.org.
Maybe, maybe for, maybe for the next...
You can't share your screen because, um, yeah, we, there's been too many issues with other cities of people sharing screens, so we decided that things had to be sent to the City Clerk. If you wish, uh, you can email it right now, I can pause the timer or reset it.
Maybe next person can speak first?
No, I'm, I, I, I'm just gonna read some numbers instead. I would like to put this crisis a little bit in perspective. As of yesterday, in United States, we had, from the beginning of the year, we had approximately six hundred thousand deaths total from all causes. This is from CDC, Center for Disease Control. Actually, six hundred and three thousand deaths. Out of this, fifteen thousand have been due to coronavirus. That's about three percent. Uh, and I would like to put in perspective California. In California, we had sixty thousand deaths since, since the beginning of the year, and five hundred, five hundred and five out of them have been due to coronavirus. This tremendous killer killed point eight percent of the total deaths. So, I am allegedly in the high-risk group because I am seventy, almost. And I feel completely safe because the numbers are so small that this is not justified, in my opinion. And I would like to talk about the sports center a little bit because I think it's very detrimental for the community to keep it closed, and especially the tennis courts. I could understand the basketball courts. Basketball, it's a collision sport, I could understand the baseball courts. But the social separation on tennis courts, it's unequal. Does not compare with Target, or with Costco, or with anything. It's very easy to keep ten feet, twenty feet separation. So, in my opinion, you should, I don't know if you have to lobby the county or what you have to do, because it would be beneficial for everybody at least to open the tennis courts. And progressively, maybe a few weeks later, open the whole sports center. It's very easy to keep the, the social separation. So that's, that's my opinion. I feel very, it's a lot easier to stay healthy if you exercise. I hope everybody agrees with me.
Okay, thank you. And I think our City Manager, in her COVID-19 update, will, will talk about this situation with the, um, the county order regarding what needs to be closed.
Please, please remember, point eight percent of the total number of deaths in California are due to COVID-19.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there, was there anybody else for oral? I don't see Jennifer raising her hand, or Lisa, so, um... Moving on to the next item, the City Manager update on COVID-19 response efforts. Welcome, welcome Deb.
Hello there, good evening. I'm gonna try and keep my remarks short because we do have a portion that, um, our city attorney has been asked to address in stern, in terms of authorities and direction, uh, from different levels of government. And then we, of course, have the homeless portion update of the COVID response. So, um, I'll just keep every, keep this pretty short. The, all events, city events, rentals, parks, recreation classes have been canceled through the end of May, though recreation and fitness opportunities are available on the virtual recreation page, which is becoming ever-popular. The city's COVID-19 webpage is be, beginning to receive more views than our homepage, which in normal times is our most viewed webpage. Rounding out the top five most viewed pages includes our Open for Business page, also good news for our businesses, virtual recreation, and live fitness classes. Uh, this past Friday, uh, Main Street Cupertino Restaurants Lazy Dog and Pineapple Tie donated, uh, a total of eleven hundred meals to help with the Fremont Union High School district feeding efforts. City staff helped by loading up the food and delivering them... Oh, someone has an open mic, okay. And delivering them to Fremont and Homestead High Schools. We are, um, scheduled every Friday until the end of the, uh, previous, the school year, which takes us, I think, to mid-June in terms of these Friday food deliveries. This past Thursday on April 16th, City of Cupertino, in partnership with the Small Business Administration, Silicon Valley Business, Small Business Development Center, and Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, hopes it, hosted a Small Business Assistance in Response to COVID-19 webinar. A follow-up webinar is scheduled for Thursday, April 23rd, uh, from 11:00 to 12:30 PM to discuss resources beyond the Economic Injury Disaster Loan and Paycheck Protection Program. Uh, the city also received a donation of twenty thousand face masks and will be distributing them to open businesses through Cupertino, throughout Cupertino on Wednesday, April 22nd, tomorrow. Uh, masks or face coverings are meant to be used by workers and to be given to customers free of charge. Um, I will be, also, uh, we're almost ready to, um, publish a, uh, letter to, or a memo to council, uh, basically describing all the actions and response actions that the city has taken uh, in response to COVID-19. I'll be sending that to council and then having that posted to our website tomorrow, our COVID website. Um, and then to just let everybody know that the effect, the true detailed effect of, uh, COVID-19, um, on the city finances, um, I gave a very top-level summary at the last, um, April 7th meeting, and that'll be detailed for county, uh, for, um, council in my memo update tomorrow, and then, of course, in full detail when the budget, budget is brought for council adoption and discussion on May 21st on schedule. Um, for council reference, the previous, um, work package, uh, discussion and everything always had that flow diagram to show dates and when we were gonna do such things. The budget has always been on the May 21st, and, and city staff and I, uh, thought it best to keep it on that date. So that's what's being planned so far. Um, I turn it over to Heather to discuss the, uh, flow of direction for the COVID response.
Um, thank you, City Manager. So, um, City Attorney Heather Minner, there's been some questions about the city's ability to ease, um, shelter-in-place restrictions and open local businesses. So, I'm just providing a little overview about where those restrictions come from and the city's, um, authority under them. Um, so in California, there's a hierarchy of emergency orders, starting with the state at the top, and then down to the county, and then to cities. Um, and Governor Newsom's March 19th executive order requires all Californians to stay at home except for certain necessary activities. Um, and under his order, violations are punishable as a crime. And then, on March 31st, the Santa Clara County Health Officer also issued, um, an, an emergency shelter-in-place order with, with, which was more strict than the state in some respects, uh, for instance, regarding construction activities that are permissible. And violations of, under the county's order is, is also punishable as, as a crime, as a misdemeanor. So those shelter-in-place restrictions, um, on, at businesses and facilities that are, that can be open and, and personal activities are set by the, by the state and, and also by Santa Clara County. And, and so the city, uh, does not have the authority to override those restrictions in state or county orders. Um, thus, if a state or county order requires facilities or businesses to remain closed, the city can't override them. And even if the city wished activities to open earlier, those businesses or facilities, and the owners of those businesses and facilities would still be subject to the, the penalties in the state and county order and, and would need to comply with those. So the city will, will have to wait and see, um, if, if the state and, and the county loosen the restrictions in their orders, and then it may have some authority to, um, consider opening businesses and when that would be appropriate, and facilities and when it would be appropriate to do so. But at this time, those state and county orders are in effect, and the city can't override them. That's all for my presentation.
Okay, um, we have a question from Councilmember Chow, welcome, Liang.
Hello, hi. So, uh, just for everyone's information tonight, the County Board of Supervisors actually will be talking about, um, forming a study session on what, how to open up. And then they are forming a task force with representatives from the City, County, and Chamber of Commerce, and community organizations to discuss the phased opening plan. So the county is starting that discussion. So if anyone has input on that, they should write to the, the Board of Supervisors. And, uh, another thing I find out, I found out is, uh, the City of Campbell, and about the same size as us, they, their employees were, um, some of their employees who cannot perform essential services have to, are not getting paid starting last week. And, uh, the City of Milpitas has...
Okay, so that, that's not that, this agenda item now.
And so then they are, so they will have to apply for federal assistance. So I would like to know what we are doing for our employees in Cupertino, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Liang. Was there any other...
Can I get an update on whether our employees are getting paid?
Well, that's not, that's not part of, um...
Uh, I think that's part of the COVID-19 update.
Well, I was gonna put it in the letter, but our, our employees, it depends on which employees you're talking about. Our furloughed employees, uh, that we talked about before have been, uh, either helped or by their own choice to, um, apply for unemployment assistance. Um, the full-time employees that we have are currently being paid because they are on half-time administrative leave, and half-time, they are using, uh, any type of leave they have available to them. Uh, that's all the permit, the, uh, full-time employees that we currently have, um, except for those that are doing essential work, they're working and, of course, earning their salaries.
That's great to know. Uh, do we, did we designate anyone as disaster workers? And because I also learned that all the government employees are required to, uh, accept the duty as disaster workers to help in a disaster. Did we have to do that, or...
I don't think we need to designate them, we're just automatically designated as also, you know, civil servants also have, um, a designation of disaster workers. So, uh, yes, we are available for work, and under, um, some of the circumstances that, in my update, when I spoke about the, uh, parks and recreation and some of the other folks helping with food delivery, it's parks and recreation and Public Works. Um, tomorrow, the face, the face mask delivery, uh, of deliveries to the businesses across Cupertino will be delivered by Public Works people.
I, I also had a, a question.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see your hand up, but, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so, so my understanding is we furloughed eighty workers, which means they're no longer employed by the city. They're not, they weren't paid, they haven't been paid by the city since 4/16, is that correct?
Um, 4/13 was the first day, I think, the, uh, Monday of last, yeah, Monday of last week, the 13th.
They haven't been paid. Um, Palo Alto, for the employees they laid off, they're a full-service city, so they have fourteen hundred and fifty-seven employees. Uh, they've, um, they have on paid leave right now, two hundred and sixty-seven of those, hundred thirty time, hundred thirty-five full-time and a hundred thirty-two part-time, um, on, again, on a much bigger base of fourteen fifty-seven. But with council action, they've agreed to, um, pay them, uh, for the first hundred and five days. So they're paid through the end of June. I think this is a topic, uh, and I could talk about this later, but I think this is a topic for us to consider, especially if we're considering welfare, uh, you know, in the community. I think we oughta be looking after our city employees and consider what we're doing for them. There's no other city, best I know, that stopped paying employees. Maybe Campbell's the first I've heard, if, if Liang has that data. But I'm, I'm very concerned for, for our employees. They obviously contribute, uh, a lot to the welfare of the city, uh, when they're employed, and we, at this time, right, by terminating them, uh, uh, through a furlough, which means, yes, they could be hired back, but they're no longer on our payroll. And, um, I'm sure, uh, many of them are hurting. Uh, so I, I have a lot of concerns about this. In Palo Alto, it took city action, uh, to, to do what they did, and I, uh, city council action in Palo Alto, and I think we oughta be having these discussions at the, at the council level, and not simply, uh, done by the city manager. Thank you.
Okay, so Rod, when it, um, when it's time for council, uh, council comments and agenda items, why don't you, um...
Thank you.
...suggest agendizing this at our next meeting? And we are, there will be a special meeting on the 28th to discuss, uh, West Valley Community Services donations, so, you know, we, we could agendize it for that meeting as well.
Yeah, I second that, I think I brought this up to Deb already. I just want some transparency.
Okay, so...
I want to take care of our employees.
And just to respond to Councilmember Sinks', um, stats, Campbell laid off, uh, so their part-time people are not getting paid. Uh, Los Altos Hills laid off, they're not getting paid. Los Gaddis, um, are paying partially admin, uh, leave for folks that can't telework. Um, and if it's in Sunnyvale, if it's an essential function, uh, they're working, but if not, um, unemployment insurance benefits for them. And Morgan Hill has fully, fully furloughed all of their part-time employees. All of those decisions were made by the city manager or staff.
Okay, yeah, it sounds like we have, you know, two divergent opinions here regarding, uh, uh, should we, uh, pay or not pay? So, agendizing it, uh, I think is fine. And John, you have a comment, welcome?
Yep, uh, I just wanted to add, since we heard that, um, we cannot override the county, well, the county, the Board of Supervisors actually had a meeting today, and they had a couple items pertaining to the COVID. One of them about being able to start considering how they would open up. And so I want everybody to know that I think we should be closely following what they're doing. One of the, uh, main items that they were discussing today, or their, their pretty much universal thought is that, uh, community health is first and foremost. Community health is first and foremost, and they also will be considering the business aspects. But again, they kept stressing that they can't compromise community health. So that being said, I think we need to really know, um, what, what rules they're going to be, uh, uh, creating that will allow us then to, um, make our changes, so...
Absolutely. Um, city staff in our EOC meetings, we always watch what county's doing. We ask questions, we do have a person that participates in their calls, and so we, um, are able to develop our plans, uh, in concert with theirs.
Can, can we get the, uh, their notes? Because I really wouldn't want it to be biased on my notes, and what my impression was, you know, they, they've got each of the councilmen, uh, um, Board of Supervisors, rather, that have their own comments, so it's not totally universal, but it's definitely, um, uh, strong, strongly supported one way or the other. Can we actually get, uh, the notes from the city person that's attending the meeting, from an impartial person?
Yeah, and as far as I know, the, um, the county, uh, when they do develop plans and they, uh, discuss things, they've actually published their own notes to all elected, um, public officials.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, so Deb, we don't know, I mean, I understand that there may be an extension of shelter-in-place, but we don't know for how long yet, is that true?
We don't know for how long yet, and I do believe that, um, per Councilmember Chow's comments, that they are working on that, plus what would they kind of relax under that extension? Um, I, I can have guesses, but we don't know anything other than that so far.
Okay, uh, let's see, did anyone else have their hand raised?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, uh, this is Liang.
Okay.
So, I'd like to quick, quickly clarify, I think, um, Mayor didn't capture what, uh, Mayor said there is a diversion, divergence of, of opinion on pay or not pay. I don't think it's here. Different cities do have, like Milpitas have stopped the paying employees not performing essential service. I think Oakland also. And I think Rod and me are not proposing not paying our employee. We are just proposing that maybe this decision could have been, uh, determined by the council, or at least get the council involved in the discussion, and then make the decision. I think that's just a different level of transparency that we are hoping to have. We are not disagreeing with what Deb has done so far. She has done a phenomenal job, and I, I support her that she is supporting our employees, uh, fully.
Okay, um, let's see, yes, oh, are there, uh, public comments on this?
I do have one email for public comment.
Okay, would you like to read that now?
From Linda Wykoff. My concern is in reference to the COVID-19-related scheduling of last Thursday's ERC meeting. For resident wish to view the meeting, they were required to pre-register in order to watch it on YouTube, and was not available for later viewing. This prevented several citizens, myself included, from being able to watch the proceedings. Could you please inform us as to why this firewall was put up for the specific meeting? The convoluted registration protocol had the effect of transparency suppression. Will city meetings continue to be scheduled in this manner? Thanks in advance for your response, Linda Wykoff. And that's the only, uh, comment.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. Is Bill here, can he comment on, or, Bill's not here anymore, is he? Oh, there he is, okay.
Hi, Mayor. This is Bill Mitchell, I'm the Chief Technology Officer for the city. The reason we do this is twofold. One is, the biggest reason is to prevent Zoom bombing. What Zoom bombing does is, anyone can come into a meeting and put up whatever they want to share or speak their minds. So what we've done is we use the webinar mechanism that kind of separates the panelists that have the free will to speak, which is normally the council or the committee members themselves, from the attendees. And what we wanna do is make sure that when attendees want to speak, they are able to speak openly, but only with the permission, just like oral communication or comment on an item. So what we're asking for is no more than what a speaker card would have. We ask for a first and last name, but we also state that that first name, last name, can be an alias. It doesn't have to be your name, it can be Cupertino, you know, resident, that's it. The email address is consistent with the governor's order that allows to make comments via email. So what we're doing is twofold again, is we are opening this up for transparency and open communication, but we're doing it in a secure manner. So what we're trying to do is achieve, uh, very robust meeting, but reduce the Zoom bombing, so that's the goal.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you.
I have a question, I think the, the commenter was asking because she couldn't register ahead of time, so she was not able to participate. I know that some meetings conduct in this way, but that hasn't been the case for our meetings. Can you clarify? And then they are not able to view the meeting. And then they are not able to view the meeting afterwards? Could we make that available after? Because then there will be no security issues.
So what we're doing is consistent with the way we normally hold our meetings. So the, the meetings that are normally publicized and recorded, which are three meetings, the council meeting, the planning commission, and the parking rec, we do continue to record those, we do post those on YouTube. Okay, the other meetings are simply consistent with what we do today. If you wanted to go or do an ERC meeting or a DRC meeting, you would have to come to City Hall, and you'd have to attend that way. Right, we do not record those meetings, you can't see it afterwards, that's the way it currently is, so we're just following the current process.
How about in terms of, she said she has to register ahead of time?
Yeah, so the registration.
So she can join the meeting in the middle?
What's that?
So she cannot join a meet, attend a meeting in the middle after the meeting has started?
Well, I don't know if that's correct. I think she can, I think she can go ahead and register, it'll, once she registers, she gets an automatic link into the meeting, and then she can join the meeting at that time.
So she can register, join the meeting at any time, even after the meeting has started, right?
That's what I believe, I'll have to verify that. I know, you know, obviously before time you can get in, but I don't know if during the meeting itself. I'll test that out here in just a second.
Okay, Darcy, you had a question?
Yes, kind of getting us back on track on the, on the topic, which is the COVID-19.
Right.
So my comment, I think, with regard to the future update or potential agenda item, is I think the, the city manager was going to come back anyway with regard to a fiscal update, and of course, that update is predominantly, if not exclusively, affected by the current health crisis and economic crisis. So, you know, if we do decide to bring back the idea, the, the topic of personnel, it would be good to have that examined side by side with fiscal impact. So that would be my only comment. And with regard to the other jurisdictions, well, I think it is legitimate to look at what other cities are doing as well, because we're all experiencing the same kind of financial downturn. So if, if Campbell's doing something, we should take a look if, you know, Palo Alto or Sunnyvale or, or any other city, frankly, in Santa Clara County is looking at measures, then they are essentially our peer cities. But the primary comment is really just fiscal, you know, I, I agree with the idea of us in the public having some, you know, understanding and knowledge of what's happening to the city financially, and given the fact that our primary expenditure is personnel, I think it's, it's very legitimate to look at it. Thanks.
Right, and I, I mean, I agree with that, and as somebody who, who commented on this, my, my simple request is, as we're considering welfare, right, the things we might do, such as the subject of our meeting, special meeting next Tuesday, I think we ought to have the whole budget perspective, so we can set some priorities. Are we interested in rental assistance programs, and/or are we interested in, are we, are we interested in, you know, helping our employees that we've had to furlough? Excuse me.
Okay, let me see, anybody else? Okay, so, seeing no other hands raised, we can move on to the next item, which is the homeless discussion. The report on homeless, who is going to be giving that?
I will. Mr. Mayor Albert Salvatore, acting community development director, good evening. Good evening, Vice Mayors, Councilmembers. So this is a brief report on our homeless encampment situation in Cupertino, as we develop the new policy with guidelines to A, provide the homeless with resources needed to learn about alternative, alternatives available to them for local social services and shelters within the community, and B, properly identify and prioritize all illegal sites, and C, mitigate health, safety, and access issues while respecting the rights of the occupants. The policy establishes guidelines to provide the homeless with contact information to help them learn more about alternative resources available for local social services and shelters within the community. Those in need will be directed to West Valley Community Services for direct assistance and evaluation. West Valley coordinates with the Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing to help individuals enter the homeless queue to access key services. Cupertino has provided funding to this nonprofit organization for homeless support. There are several work programs for fiscal year nineteen twenty and fiscal year twenty twenty-one for housing and planning staff to address homelessness, and as was mentioned, there's a special item on the twenty-eighth to elaborate more on this. So currently, there are several homeless encampments in various locations within the city of Cupertino boundaries, most notably, and the ones we received the majority of our recent complaints over are the encampments along Wolf Road, both south of I-280 adjacent to the Hyatt House Hotel, and also north of I-280 adjacent to the Hamptons Apartments. The primary responsibility to investigate illegal encampments within Cupertino's jurisdiction is the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office. Other enforcement strategies in and around Cupertino involve Caltrans, CHP, Union Pacific Railroad, and the city of San Jose. With the encampments that seem to be getting quite large along Wolf Road, the Sheriff's Office does not have a way to remove them without the help of Cupertino's code enforcement staff. Captain Rich Urina of the Sheriff's Office said he cannot speak for the county as a whole, but in cities they serve like Saratoga, Cupertino, and unincorporated areas of West Santa Clara County, they're seeing a slight growth in encampments, but he's not certain whether it's related to the current shelter-in-place order or not. Complaints are typically received from both Cupertino 311 and from the Sheriff's Office dispatch line. There have been, let's see, twenty-two calls specifically for the Wolf Road encampments that were taken in since January one of this year. At the moment, there are no plans to initiate enforcement for any illegal encampments while the current shelter-in-place order is active. City staff, however, has taken this time to set up a master agreement with one or two licensed companies experienced in the cleanup of homelessness, of homeless encampment sites. We'll direct, we will work to directly, sorry, we will work directly with them to coordinate efforts with other agencies involved in the cleanup process. After the shelter-in-place order is lifted and with a master agreement in place, code enforcement staff will prioritize a plan to post a notice-to-vacate warning, which puts the occupants on notice, and will give seventy-two hours to vacate before the site is cleaned up. The notification will clearly specify date and time of the proposed cleanup and how valuables left behind can be claimed. Because health and safety issues are a major concern for staff and for third-party contractors responsible for the cleanup, specific steps are outlined to mitigate health, safety, and access issues while respecting the rights of the occupants. Sheriff's deputies will be present to perform an initial sweep prior to the cleanup, to ensure all occupants have left the site, and to verify the conditions of the area while documenting the remaining properties left behind. So with that, I have with us Roger Lee, Director of Public Works Department, and Captain Rich Urina, Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office, and Carrie Hughes, our Housing Manager, to, we're all available here to answer any questions that you might have or respond to any comments. Thank you.
Okay, we do have one, one person from the, oh, I thought we had a person from the public, but they lowered their hand. Oh, they raised it again. Lisa, would you like to speak? Lisa, are you available to speak?
I am, can you hear me?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Three minutes.
So, I hope I heard things correctly, but from what I heard, I have a question about when these visits are being made either by city or sheriffs or whoever, this other agency. I think it would be a good opportunity to also take care of census numbers, if it's possible, because that is only going to become increasingly important. And to add to that, for any staff that doesn't have an essential job to do but is still employed, it would be great if there could be some system where they could reach out to every resident possible, and just make sure that they have completed the census, excuse me. So that's basically it. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, back to council. So, one big concern, and I raised it on the call with the county last week, and other people have raised it, is the sites on Wolf Road, there's no sanitation facilities, no restrooms, for some reason, and I understand that the county was looking at doing hotel rooms for the homeless, but then they said they would only do it for homeless that test positive or have other medical issues. So, would it be prudent for the city or Caltrans to supply portable toilets to those areas, or would that just encourage more people to come to those?
Carrie can respond to that.
Okay.
I know other communities, I, I, let me pull up my list. Pardon me. So, I understand that the city of Mountain View has deployed some ADA-compliant portable restrooms. I can look into how they went about funding that, and I think San Jose has kept, or, excuse me, Sunnyvale has opened up some additional facilities for folks, but I would need to look into that in terms of how we could do that in Cupertino.
Okay, and one thing that wasn't mentioned, I was reading the CDC guidance on encampments, and they recommend it against doing sweeps, and they recommend it against a sweep that sends the homeless into shelters, because the shelters are more dangerous than where they are now. What they do recommend is individual hotel or motel rooms, and I understand San Francisco's doing that, and hopefully our county could look into doing that as well. It'd be a better situation for everybody, but of course, that, that does cost quite a bit of money. So, does anyone else from the council have a hand raised to speak about this issue? I don't see anybody, let's see.
I think Liang is waving her hands.
Oh, yeah, Liang, welcome, Liang.
Hi, so, I forgot my question, so, and I understand from talking to the, last week at the legislative review, that actually the funding for homeless and social services come from the state, but it's not allocated to the cities, allocated to the county and a few of the large cities. The city only gets very little CDBG block grant for social services, so we really rely on the county to deal with this issue. And I understand the county is building some shelters, I heard Campbell, in Campbell, they have commissioned Motel Six to become shelters. So how do they allocate this kind of beds to people or to homeless in different cities? How, when do, do, would Cupertino area homeless people get their turn? How, how does that work?
I can, I can provide the information that I've learned recently. In terms of housing folks in motels temporarily, communities such as San Jose and Sunnyvale is looking into it right now, they are using their CDBG CARES block grant, which is the COVID-specific block grant, which will be coming to council in the next meeting or two for review. And how, the system that is set up for housing folks is something that I would need, for providing motel vouchers, is something I would need to look into in more detail, and I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, and, and some people have brought up the idea the city has some houses laying empty, maybe not at the most ideal location, and maybe community rooms in parks are, not sure, have we explored the potential ways?
I do know there's a conversation going on between the city and the YMCA, which is over there behind, well, you know where it is, the YMCA.
Yeah.
Because sometimes open to do similar things like providing facilities and all that, but that's the only conversation I know of currently.
Okay. There were, there were some homeless students in the Anza, so they have all gone home?
I don't know, we don't.
I hope.
I don't know. But I would, I would say that Carrie can, can do some research and bring back some information for council consideration.
I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak on this item? I don't see any other.
Sorry to interrupt, I, so I may have inadvertently lowered Connie Cunningham's hand, and then I saw a hand blink a couple more times, so I wanted to just check on her, if I could just allow her to speak, just to double-check.
Sure.
Connie, were you trying to speak?
Yes, no, that there would be, I mean, I didn't know what was going to be presented in this item when it was on the agenda, and quite frankly, I did not realize that we, in the city, were considering sweeps of the homeless encampments. Prior to this discussion tonight, all the discussions had been about how our city might help with the county and others in a cooperative way to help the homeless people and to also keep COVID from being spread through their area, as well as protecting other residents in the city. So I think to say that I'm horrified to hear that this is in fact what was being suggested here is, is accurate. I am surprised and horrified that at the lifting of the order, the COVID order, that sweeps would begin, how, how is that in keeping with what we were trying to do before? I am hoping that I am misunderstanding this completely, and that you don't really, I mean, first you say mitigate health issues while respecting the people, that sounded very nice, and then immediately, several encampments were there, and the sheriff says, well, there's a slight increase, then we got these complaints, and now we're going to remove them. I, I'm, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I don't have a solution right off the top of my head, it's just so sudden and so different from the directions that we've been taking, either through the Housing Commission or through discussions I've heard at council.
So Connie, I don't think anyone is planning any sweeps during the whole COVID-19 pandemic, that would go against all the advice we get, but isn't true, after the pandemic, those encampments like on Wolf Road with no sanitation facilities and all, I mean, obviously, they cannot remain there, and.
Well, I, I understand the point, I really do, Mayor, I do really do. I, I guess, I, the thing that is bothering me is that I know that there are, for instance, mobile showers that are, that are offered through East Palo Alto organization, nonprofit, and there are such things as washing stations, and there are such things as sanitary job centers. I, I realize that, it's the concept, the way it sounded, that it didn't sound terribly respectful, and it sounded like at the very, right at the end of the COVID-19, when that's lifted, when everybody is still reeling from the, the homeless, the, the rent problems and stuff that we've been talking with, with maybe new people becoming homeless, it, it just, the suddenness of one being ended and then starting this, this whole different kind of approach is, is.
Okay.
Is what got me, but I, I understand your point, I do.
So, is Heather still here? Where's Heather?
She's here.
Oh.
Yes, Mayor.
So Heather, I under, if I understand correctly, the Ninth Circuit Court had a ruling that said unless beds are available in a homeless shelter, you cannot do a sweep of a homeless encampment. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
So, okay, so I just, right, I just wanted to be sure, you know, if a sweep is done when this is all over. it has to be done when there are places for the homeless to go. Now, of course, you cannot force them to go to a shelter against their will, but at least there has to be that available. Is that true?
More or less, yes.
Okay, more or less. Great. Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. Mr. Willie, you have your hand raised.
So I'm glad we're talking about this. You know, I've kind of for quite some time, you know, felt that are we really doing our share in the valley? And our small community, we don't have much in the way of places or resources. I clearly remember those cold winter nights, years gone by, San Jose opening up the Armory, and so many people waiting outside. We don't have something like that. Well, today at the Santa Clara County Board meeting, they also had an agenda item for homeless. And the item that they brought up or they discussed, which we might be able to also actually do something in our community. And that is, they said that Governor Newsom gave 115, or 105 trailers to San Jose for being used for the homeless. And Santa Clara County said that, wow, we also, they have 15 trailers that they said were at the fairgrounds that are being set up for housing homeless. And so then that just kind of rings to me since we don't have an Armory. Councilman Chow brought up, well, maybe some of the park buildings or something. But I would tend to think that if we were going to be incurring, you know, this ongoing cost, if we did do it with the concept of maybe having a number of trailers that were kept at one of our storage yards, and then when they're needed, then they could be brought out and put it in a location and used for the time period that is needed, and then taken back and cleaned up at that time. So I hadn't thought about that, but hearing it today, that to me, sounds like something that I'd like to suggest we explore.
Okay. Thank you, John. I understand the trailers at the fairgrounds are for isolation for people that have tested positive, but they're not for general homeless that have not infected with COVID-19. I could be wrong, but that, that's what I seem to remember hearing on the county call. We, we had the captain raising his hand. Welcome, captain.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for inviting me to this conversation. As Albert had mentioned, we do get a lot of reports specifically to the Wolf North of 280 and South of 280 encampments. I would say about two to four a week go directly to our dispatch. Our staff is very familiar with the people that are living there. One of the things I do want to point out is that every time that we get dispatched to the encampments, we do offer resources. Resources such as the emergency shelter for families, toll-free hotline for free housing, the rotating safe car program, and many other resources to include food. However, the comments that we get back are that unfortunately, they don't like, the people that are living there don't like to follow the rules that are established by some of these shelters. In other words, they like to have their freedom to do what they, what they want outside of the walls of a shelter. And so as an example, a lot of them have items that they like to carry with them that are not allowed in some of these shelters. And so I, I don't want residents to think that we are going to these encampments with the intent of kicking them out to other locations. Our intent has always been to provide them with the resources so that they can go somewhere else. However, as you mentioned, we can't make them take these resources. We certainly can point them in the right direction. On several occasions, we actually have driven them to other locations so that they can take advantage of the shelters there. So we continue to do that in the future to identify locations so that when we do in fact clean up that area, they have a place to, to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else on that, I don't see any other hands raised here, and no more.
Actually Kitty.
Oh, yeah. Kitty Moore. Okay. I'm sorry. Welcome Kitty.
Hi, Mayor Sharp. Are you there?
I'm here. You have three minutes.
I was just wondering what kind of items the individuals did not want to follow the rules about in their encampment.
Captain?
So a lot of them have a significant, significant amount of personal items, suitcases, collectibles, things that they cherish as being valuable. And because it is a significant amount of items, they feel like they can't take those items with them to these particular shelters that are available. And so that's one of many reasons that they don't like shelters or a structured shelter.
Okay. So in, in driving by, I've noticed a significant number of bicycles, for example, which seem to outnumber the inhabitants of the camp. Do you have anything to say about that?
Yeah. So, so we have noticed that they like to have two wheels. And so when we get these reports of, you know, people doing cooking, for example, is one report we have gotten. We, when we show up to these encampments, we do check serial numbers. We do check items that don't appear to belong to them. However, their explanation's always been that they've been given these bicycles, these items, because residents realize that they're homeless and that they need to get around. So we do check items to make sure things are not being stolen from the city or the region. And so short of identifying those things, we, we leave them there with them because it is their property.
Okay. If there's nobody else, let's see. I don't see anyone else. Sorry. There's a lot of scrolling here. Oh, Darcy, welcome.
Yeah, thanks. So there are actually two announcements from the governor's office earlier this year. The one that was more recent was the more than a thousand trailers, 100 some odd, of which Councilmember Willie points out were allocated to San Jose recently. And those trailers were dedicated to helping to combat the COVID problem among homeless. However, there was another announcement from the governor's office in January this year where they were talking about campers and trailers as well to help out the homeless situation. And I'm wondering whether it might be possible for our city to reach out and ask about perhaps getting one or possibly even two of those campers or trailers for this particular encampment. It does seem to be growing. I don't know how many bicycles a few people need. But you know, it's one of those things where perhaps the jurisdictional interests of not having a growing encampment along one of our main thoroughfares could be counterbalanced and respected with the idea that we should be compassionate to people that are in a situation of not having shelter. Perhaps we can, you know, provide them a better shelter source as well as meet some of the interests of our jurisdiction as well. So I, I would just make a request that we reach out and try to find out if a couple of these trailers or even campers are available for our city to address this particular problem. Thankfully, the people living in these tents apparently aren't subject to the COVID-19 issue. But unfortunately, you know, we're not thus qualified to get one of the more than 1,000 trailers. However, again, there was another allocation and announcement earlier in the year in January from the governor's office about campers and trailers available. So I would like to see a follow-up on that, or if anyone has thoughts with regard to that particular announcement and how it might help us in this situation. Thanks.
So we can look into that.
Right. And if we did, if we were able to get them, where would we put them?
I, I think you would just put them, I think you would just put them where the tents are right now.
Well, there's, you really can't, I mean, there's no place to park it where the tents are. So I'm just not sure if we need to find another place.
I mean, there, there's clearly a vast expanse of space in that general vicinity. I mean, I, I don't think we're lacking in our jurisdiction for places to put a couple campers. But, you know, I, I recognize that some of the issues that Captain Moreno pointed out with regard to some people's reluctance to actually moving into a shelter because they want to have their possessions may also apply here. But the fact of the matter is, you know, if you have three people with, with 10 bikes, you know, and they, they seem to be adding, I, I, I just don't know whether that is something that makes sense for us to at least explore other alternatives. And, you know, I think it's, it's pretty fair to say, look, if you have somewhere to live and bathe, you know, if you have shelter, then we're going to require that, you know, some of these extraneous items not be, you know, not be basically, you know, cluttering our, our, our public right of ways. I mean, I, I would think at some point, we're going to need to address the fact that, you know, people are camping on our, on our public right of ways. And, you know, it, it seems like this is probably a reasonable transition to try to help them in their situations, as well as try to observe the interests of our city. I don't know. There's just one suggestion. If, if there's, you know, if there's four people in council that are adamantly opposed to trailers or campers, then, you know.
I mean, I, I mean, personally, I'm not opposed. It's, you know, there, we can't put the trailers on private property. I know it's, that encampment is right next to Valco, another one's next to the Hamptons. If we got trailers, we'd have to put them on city property, not, not on private property, unless the property owners agreed that it was okay to put them there. But yeah, I'm certainly not opposed to trailers if it can help temporarily address this issue. John, you had your hand raised, and then Rod, you had your hand raised. So John first.
John, I think you're still muted.
Well, I thought Steve, I thought the mayor was muting and unmuting us. So I, I do think if, if we at least now acknowledge that we should explore this, and then we kind of think about what the options are. If San Jose has, you know, 105 of these trailers at the fairgrounds, you know, one possibility might be to, if we have, say, five trailers, and we ask them if we could also locate them there, and they're paid for and taken care of by Cupertino. If, if we can leverage, I think that's a good thing. If we can learn how they're doing it, I think that's a good thing. And then I think we can also be exploring where we might put them. I, I'm very cautious to make suggestions too much. But I mean, in some of the places where there are a, a, a large number of parking spaces, maybe more than is needed at times, especially during this COVID time with shelter in place, potentially in some of those larger parking lots at Blackberry Farm or something. And at any given year, they, the trailers could be put in a different location, all depending on what the conditions are at that time. So I would think that, you know, let's consider options like that. I mean, if San Jose has 105 and we have five, and it becomes 110 at the same location. But, you know, here we are contributing to the solution and, and not watching. So, thank you.
Can I, can I make, this is Deb. Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Certainly, we city staff will, will go and do some research and figure out if we can, how we would get a hold of some of the trailers. What we could do is just delay the problem solving for our placement or something. The shelter in place definitely says that we cannot compel these folks to move right now under SIP, and I think it would be a violation of the current health order. So I just think that why don't you let us do some legwork and see what we can find out before we start problem solving?
Okay. Rod?
Yeah. I appreciate the comments on this. And, you know, I think the easiest part might be finding the trailers. The harder, although, yeah, for looking for them to be funded by other levels of government, that may take a fiscal cycle. But, you know, identifying property that we would, we would devote to this purpose, either on a temporary or rotating basis, as John suggests, or on a permanent basis. You know, other communities, not unlike us, have done this. Sunnyvale, right? Mountain View has wrestled with this. I think a good discussion could be had with, with county staff that have a bigger scope of resources than us, as well as the state, if we're really serious about trying to bring some housing to homeless folks. And yes, I recognize during a crisis, particularly, we can't force anything. So I, I'd rather view this as perhaps a longer term effort. But, you know, it'd be a worthy one to, to have us look at. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Also, Deb, maybe, you know, schools are closed now until the end of August or beginning of September, and have large parking lots, they have showers, they have bathrooms. Now, of course, we can't tell the school districts what to do, but those would seem, those parking lots and the fact that they have things like showers available, that would.
We have sports center.
Be a good idea for that.
Our sports center does have showers and parking space.
That's true, too.
Yeah.
Okay. I see one person has raised their hand to talk. Lisa, are you still there?
Lisa has already spoken.
Oh, she already spoke. Okay. She didn't raise it. Okay. I didn't know if she had spoken on this item or on the.
I just have some information on the trailers a little bit. But it's okay if you don't want to let me talk. It's fine.
All right. Yeah. You've already spoken. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry. One more point. I think, yeah, it's, it's good that we are trying to solve the homeless problem. However, housing is not the only solution, part of the solution. Mental health is another big part that state hasn't been well funding the mental health. And so they are kicking it to the cities.
Okay. We are on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor.
What?
Before you move on, I just wanted to remind you.
Oh, there is one more thing. Okay.
And I believe you have a closed session readout from the closed session that was earlier today, this evening.
Oh, was that sent to me? I, hold on. Let me.
Yes, the city attorney sent it to you.
At what time? Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, I see it here. Let me open that. Okay, we did have a closed session before this meeting. It was conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9, possible initiative litigation. The council confirmed approval to initiate litigation by joining a coalition of cities and counties by unanimous vote of all council members. And that was it. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me about that. Okay, our next agenda item, oh, is the report on committee assignments. That's before consent calendars. Does anyone have a committee assignment to report on? I know I do, but I will go last. Let's see. Darcy?
Yes, thank you. We've had a couple of very good library expansion room working group meetings these past couple of Thursdays. There is a bridging architect that has been hired. A project coordinator has been hired as well. And I know that the group is very committed and enthusiastic about making sure that we do this in a, in a thoughtful manner. But I don't think right now we're looking towards the end of next year to be able to. And so right now would be a good time to plan it. I hope that we're able to bring some. And so uh, right now would be a good time to, to plan it. I hope that we're able to uh bring something um you know, a good value to the community uh once we've resolved a lot of uh some, some obvious issues that are happening approaching in the future with regard to interacting and making sure that we keep our active spaces. So thanks very much. And then um, that, that's it for the committee assignments.
Okay, um, let's see. Uh, Rod, do you have any?
Hi, yes, yes, I do. Uh, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board met. Um, we are in a very uncertain condition uh um uh due to the virus and also the adverse actions by the P U C. Uh, we however, uh, if based on current forecasts, believe we can still offer money for programs this year, grow our reserves a bit. Uh, we are aiming toward half a year's worth of uh, of reserves as a function of revenue, total revenue for the year. And um, we will maintain something like a four to five percent discount to P G N E's uh rates net of the power difference adjustment fee. So that means our customers on net will be paying four to five percent less for electricity and and that could and probably will change just depending on exactly where uh P G N E comes down with uh their, their rates. But um um, I, it's a, it's a good, good report to be able to give at this time. And we're looking at some programs for uh a rate relief for uh folks who have been economically impacted uh by this downturn. Thanks.
Okay, um, Leon, do you have anything? You're muted. Leon, you're muted. We can't, okay.
We have the legislative review committee meeting. And we, we have supported a federal H R six, four, six, seven, which is Coronavirus Community Relief Act. Because the previous federal um bill did not provide any funding for small cities like us. So hopefully that this bill will pass and provide some funding for cities like Cupertino. And then also, uh, we have supposed, uh, voted to pass a, a letter to be sent to the League of Cities. On the new housing proposal that they have proposed, I mean, the mayor maybe should talk about that.
Okay.
He wrote a really nice letter. Yeah, it will be for the full council to, to.
Right. Okay, uh, John, do you have anything?
Um, unfortunately, the uh water, uh Valley Water Meeting was canceled due to COVID. Um, not sure why they didn't uh try to set it up as a video. Uh, hopefully the next one will take place. And then being the alternate on the clean energy, I attended it, but Councilman Sinks has already reported on that. So that's it for this week.
Okay, great. So um, yeah, as uh Councilmember Chow mentioned, we had our, our L R C meeting. Most of the legislation in Sacramento is on hold right now because of the situation. Although some legislators have, um, because nothing can be reviewed, they've come out with some proposals uh that are kind of off the wall, but uh have no chance of being enacted into bills. Um, we also talked about the League of Cities housing proposal. Uh, some of the stuff in their proposal uh was acceptable and some of it was, you know, frankly, very honor, onerous, um, especially suggestions um regarding reductions in um, city mitigation fees, which are, as we all know, are already not even set at the Nexus level. It's not set at the level that the Nexus study says would even be break even. So uh, the city manager and I, we are going to work on a letter to the League of Cities. It appears that this housing proposal was written uh in the, in their belief that S B fifty was going to pass. And uh, they were surprised, as many were, that uh it, uh, it did not move forward. And based on that, they, the thought is that they may want to modify this proposal to uh take into account the, uh, the needs and the desires of cities in terms of um building affordable housing and density and, and that sort of thing. Um. So we'll have more information when we have the letter completely crafted and bring it to council. Uh, Cities Association had a teleconference. Uh, nothing exciting. We did approve the budget for next year. Um, and I think uh I think that, that's all that I had. Uh, I've been on the calls with the county, but that is not a committee assignment. So I will not talk about that right now and save that for later. Um. So we are done there. We, now we are on to the consent calendar. So did anybody want to pull anything from consent? Either a member of the public or a member of the city council. I don't see anything. Okay, I do not see anything. So can somebody make a motion?
I can move items five through seven of the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Okay. He raised his, yeah, he's
He raised his hand.
He didn't unmute himself, but he raised the proper, the proper finger.
Councilmember Willie.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Paul.
I vote yes.
Mayor Scharf.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. So we are on to second reading of ordinances. Uh, Madam City Clerk, will you conduct the second reading of two, zero, seventy-three, oh, two?
Uh, is that the correct? It's, I believe it's two, zero, two, one, nine, five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um.
I'll go ahead and do that.
Right, I'm looking at item eight. Uh. Okay, yeah, go ahead. I'm looking at the number on the um.
File number, file.
Yeah, the file number, sorry. I, I don't have that open.
This is the first reading of ordinance.
No, it's second reading, isn't it?
Pardon me, pardon me, yes. This is the second reading of ordinance number two, zero, dash, two, one, nine, five. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino approving a development agreement for the development of a new seven-story, one-hundred-and-fifty-five-room hotel with associated site landscaping improvements located at one, zero, nine, three, one, North Hands Boulevard, A P N, three, two, six, dash, one, zero, dash, zero, six, one.
Okay, I don't see any um attendees that wish to speak on this. Were there any? Before we vote, are there any uh city council members that wish to speak on this? It is the second reading, so.
Um, I'd like to move that the city council will conduct the second reading as conducted by the city clerk and that we enact ordinance number two, zero, two, one, nine, five.
I will second. Okay, Rod, second. All right, uh, Kirsten, can you co- conduct the vote, please?
Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Uh, no.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Scharf.
I'm sorry, could, could, could we go back and just amend the motion to note that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof?
I already made that in my motion. It is the second reading.
It's the second reading, not the first read.
I, I understand. But, okay.
So is that okay? Cause Darcy did include that in his motion.
That it would be read by title only in this reading const- I see, okay.
Well, I, Darcy, did you say by title only?
I, I put that at the beginning. I used to follow the form because I don't have that handy dandy.
Right, which is what I'm, which is what I'm reading here too, so.
Sure, so yeah, we'll accept that, Heather. Let's uh conduct the vote again then.
Apologize for the interruption.
Uh, Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
No.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Scharf.
Aye.
Motion carries with Willie voting no.
Okay, hold on one second. Let me get to the, sorry, I'm working on two computers here. Okay. Um. Okay, we're on to public hearings. Item nine, this is to consider an appeal of the planning commission's approval of a minor residential permit to allow a second-story balcony, application R M two, zero, one, seven, three, nine, applicant Francis Kim. Si residence, project location, two, one, eight, six, five, San Fernando Avenue, accessory parcel number three, five, seven, one, five, oh, four, three. The appellants are Shijian Huang and Eric and Cindy uh Fong. So can we have a staff report on this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Erica Povada, Associate Planner with um the Community Development Department. So I will now share my screen for the presentation of the appeal.
Okay, we see it.
All right. So on October eleventh, two thousand seventeen, the applicant and property owner applied for a minor residential permit to allow for a second-story balcony at two, one, eight, six, five, San Fernando Avenue in the Montevista neighborhood. The minor residential permit was associated with residential design review permit to allow for first and second story addition at an existing single-story residence. However, tonight's appeal by the two adjacent properties is limited to only the minor residential permit for the balcony. On November eleventh, two thousand seventeen, planning staff received a letter of opposition to the project signed by eleven property owners. This is included in the appeal packet. After receiving the letter, the property owner met with the neighbors and revised the plans to address the neighbors' concerns. The summary of revisions is included in the staff report and reflected in the approved plan set. The fourteen-day comment period required by code took place from May first through May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. During the comment period, staff received uh numerous written comments, including a letter signed by thirty-five neighbors. On June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, the property owner and the applicant revised the project plans a second time to address some comments received during the notice period and revisions to the proposed carport. The list of revisions is included in the staff report as well as as well as the approved plan set. On June twenty-fifth, the project was approved by the Director of Community Development as it was found to be consistent with all aspects of the R one ordinance. The director's decision to approve the design uh review permit and the minor residential permit was appealed on July tenth by Shijian Huang and Eric and Cindy Feng. On November twelfth, the planning commission conducted a public hearing and denied the appeal, upholding the director's decision to approve the project with minor revisions to the resolutions. The applicants then filed an appeal against planning commission's approval for the minor residential permit, um, approving the second-story balcony on November twenty-sixth, uh, which leads us to today. The basis of the appeal can be organized into three primary concerns, including privacy, security, and obstruction of neighboring views. Please feel free to refer to the staff report as well as the appeal packet for additional quotations from the appeal. As I previously, previously mentioned, the minor residential permit was approved by the Director of Community Development and upheld by planning commission as it was set to comply with the R one ordinance. One of the purposes of the R one ordinance is to ensure the provision of light, air, and a reasonable level of privacy, mainly through minimum setback requirements as well as adherence to the privacy screening requirements. It's important to note that the preservation of views is not one of the stated purposes of the R one ordinance. As indicated in the site plan below, the proposed second-story balcony exceeds the minimum setback requirements established by the R one ordinance. This is a rear yard balcony setback of over sixty feet, where only twenty feet is required. Side yard balcony setback of nearly nineteen feet on the west side and approximately seventeen and a half feet on the east side, where only fifteen feet is required for each side. Furthermore, the project complies with the privacy screening requirements of the R one ordinance by proposing new privacy screening plantings and incorporating existing screening plantings along the western, eastern, and northern property lines for the balcony and second-story windows. Sorry, let me go back one side. Um, per the R one ordinance, the objective of privacy plantings is to provide substantial screening within three years of plantings, and these plantings are also considered protected trees under the city's protected. As an added level of privacy protection, planning commission revised condition number ten. The resolution to stipulate that privacy protection shall include alternative privacy plantings consistent with the city's requirements and a balcony railing of at least forty-eight inches on the east side as composed of materials that provide sufficient privacy screening. The appellants also raised several other points in their appeal packet that are not all directly related to the minor residential permit balcony. These additional comments include the fact that other neighbors would not propose a similar balcony, concerns about building length, safety, concerns about potential short-term rental activities, negative impacts on property values, balcony is causing disharmony throughout the neighborhood. And I'd be happy to go over all of staff's response to these additional comments in detail if requested. Um, these are also addressed in the staff report. The project has been found by the Director of Community Development as well as the planning commission to comply with all aspects of chapter nineteen point two eight of the Chap- the Cupertino Municipal Code, including setbacks, privacy screening, floor area, and building height. Furthermore, the applicant has voluntarily revised the scope of work twice in order to address the concerns of adjacent property owners by reducing the total living area, relocating the second story, reducing the size of the second-story balcony, and decreasing the total building length. Staff therefore recommends that city council deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's decision to approve the minor residential permit, R M dash two, four, dash, thirty-nine. And I'm available for any questions. We also have the appellants as well as the property owner and architect here to present.
Okay, um. So let's hear from the appellant uh and the property owners uh first, and then we can bring it back to council. Um, so who will be speaking first here? Um. Okay, welcome.
Yes, um, I'll be, my name is Elizabeth Feng. I'm going to speak on behalf of my parents, Eric and Cindy Feng.
Okay, so you guys have ten minutes. Go.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. We're going to share the time with Jay. He's the other.
Okay, welcome.
I'll speak for five.
Okay.
And then I will also share my screen. Let me share it now. Okay, can everyone see it?
It just says loading.
Okay, maybe there's a little bit of a lag in.
Okay, there it goes. I'll start the timer now. Go.
All right, thank you. All right, good evening. Um, we learned about this project when Mr. Tai asked us to sign a release of privacy protection form to waive planting trees. He has a big tree in his yard that has caused damage to our property. So we asked if he could remove his tree and he said that it is not related to this project. In numerous emails, he said that his addition is just above his garage. Walking to our driveway, you see that he has put um three illegal structures after moving in for their. Walking to our driveway, you see that he has put three illegal structures after moving in for their privacy, and he's also installed an AC unit next to our five-feet shared fence, but we've never complained to him about any of this. After looking at his design, we communicated, spent a lot of time and energy with the owner and city planner. Our two main concerns were for him to build in the front of his lot in order to align with the neighbors' houses and to not have a balcony and carport. With four other neighbors, he met with us the first time and then refused any other meetings. Erica also came to view the property site. With eight other neighbors, we expressed our concerns. So we were very disappointed when she recommended to deny the appeal and to uphold the design permit. Mr. Tai said he made many changes. However, his changes have been really to max out his building. As you can see, everything's maxed out here, and he has a carport and a balcony that is not included in the square footage. So this is the design, this is the balcony, and this is the carport structure with three pillars. This is Mr. Tai's house, you can see that it's already longer with his neighbors. So what we're asking is if he could build in the front like the rest of the neighbors instead of extending all the way into everyone's backyard and not to have the balcony. When he does this, it blocks everyone's air and sunlight. It's not harmonious with the surrounding structures of the neighborhood or compatible with the identity of our neighborhood. So when he builds, we'd ask him to think about his community and neighbors, how it works well together with others and how it doesn't create any problems or conflicts. Looking at the zones and guidelines, the guidelines are in red, and the purple indicates how the guidelines really work together with the neighborhood and the community. It's not looking at one-sided, but everything has to work well together. So Montevista has irregular lot shapes and sizes, so how do the ordinance's guidelines and lot design work together to help everyone out? Our house is the one in the middle. When we built our house, our left-side neighbor has a shorter lot length than ours. Ours has the same size as Mr. Tai's. So when we built, even though we could have had the required setback of 20, we chose not to build right in the middle to block everyone and rather align with the neighbors on our left and right to create harmony and compatibility and to really ensure that everyone has this green space where they can enjoy and feel free to relax in their backyard. So with Mr. Tai's extension, it would put it right here, and it's just no longer compatible, and the balcony brings really threats to his neighbors by overlooking everything. So we're saying that the design is not harmonious and compatible, and it's not a low-intensity setting. Additionally, the high structure will now cast shadows in people's yards, like you can see, and of course, it will be even more when the building's constructed. His rooftop and carport, it extends, it's a really big space, and the carport is flat, so we are worried that like someone could easily jump over, and then it's away from our five-feet shared fence and then just leap into our yard. So it does pose a safety factor. Now, balcony is a space that people use to enlarge their living space, and usually for people who don't really have a yard, he already has a big enough space inside and outside his house. Neighbors are really adamant against this balcony. They say it's a threat, it's not considerate, and they don't really want to live next to a house like this. Similarly, the planning commissioner said that the balcony is too big, it's an error, it has to be included in the square footage, and it causes pain for the neighbors. Looking at the Montevista neighborhood, with houses the same lot size as ours, there is no balcony found or carport in the backyard. Similarly, the city website of Cupertino shows that balconies are really located in the front of the house, and they are small in size. So we would like to enjoy our home peacefully. According to his initial email, he said it's just above his garage. If he had followed this, there would be no complaints, and his house would be finished by now. But he continues to expand into the yard, and so our concession to the owner is we're willing to allow him to do that, to extend into the yard and break the harmony and compromise on visual impact, but please, we don't want to compromise on safety. So we're asking still no balcony and no carport. It really is a risk for the people who live here day and night. And we've had over 60 neighbors sign in opposition to the balcony and a carport. So please listen to your neighbors, your community, the people you're living with, and even though you're enjoying your house and finding comfort, please don't sacrifice and put your neighbors at risk for this. So everyone's just really worried right now with coronavirus, and we ask that you don't put additional stress on your community at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and who is going to speak next? Kind of five minutes as well.
Shijian.
Hey, welcome. Yeah, you can start anytime.
Okay, I'll chime to the...
Okay.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, we got it, okay.
Okay. Mr. Tai made many privacy and security protection after he moved in, including gate and fence. Yeah. He also made many remodels without permit. He also made illegal fence for privacy, for his privacy, but he doesn't think about neighbors' privacy with his expansion, even by the privacy form. Although he made some change, he changed mainly for his own interests, maximized far with balcony and carport, did not address neighbors' top concerns. Before and after public hearing, he refused to talk to us. We were forced to appeal. And the yellow block is where he at. Where it located in this diagram. Yellow blocks are the expansion, instead of building in the front, he expanding in the back. Expansion are not harmonious in scale and design. From my backyard, it's adverse visual and privacy impact. Neighbor Philippines being watched by the balcony. My house was built in 1944. It was already built when I moved in 12 years ago. It was the only way to access the room. And neighbors' houses built with the same lot, second-story built in the front, open backyard without balcony and carport. I think this is good for the Cupertino. And these are the 60 neighbors who signed up opposed. Is it... The blue one is the project at... It is all very close neighbor. Neighbors know the location, the environment well.
When we are having, curing appeals here, the most common cause for that is the addition of a second floor, and in particular, the addition of a balcony. So this is one of the things, I've actually brought this up on the last two, on our last two work plan efforts, that the current policy that the city has, which treats balconies as not included in part of the calculation, it creates an incentive to put a balcony where, where, because it's basically free space. I think that's an error in the way that our building code is written to the folks who are building the house, who have the application of the house. There's very, very strong sentiment in the neighborhood that this is an issue. And I think in particular, the balcony. Consider not having the balcony, consider doing it differently, consider a different planning plan. Something that is more cooperative, you know, with the people that you'll be living with, living around you. And I think that things will work better.
Is the carport included in the square footage? I have a final question.
It does not count as floor area ratio.
Okay, so I also, I know we've been honing in on the balcony. I see the carport further extending into the rear yard as another issue which can cause some pain for the neighbors because that's a, it's a structure, and while there's openings on three of the sides and it's not being counted as the square footage, it's still adding another part of the building there. And I also agree that our balcony ordinance needs some work and that that square footage should probably be counted in the square footage of the project. I'm not currently agreeing with the floor area ratio portion of that, though.
But when you see 57 neighbors get together and really talk about building harmony and really trying to build a harmonious type of environment and be conscientious with everyone, it really changes your point of view. And that's the challenge, right? That's the challenge here. Can be done by Mr. Tai over there is the ability to make his neighbors happier about what that decision's going to do. Consider what would happen with reducing the extension of that and think about privacy protection members that we can enforce. And I think that's a very important part, so those are just my observations.
Relying not just on the code, but also what the community wants and having a conversation. With a smaller balcony, it doesn't go all the way out to work. Can we have some other mitigations for the sideyard views, which what most people are concerned about? Because you're going to be living with them for a long time. And keep their concerns also in mind. See, where can you probably make some concessions that addresses their topmost concerns?
Hey, we're over five minutes here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Bad thing, and, you know.
Somebody needs to mute themselves, we're hearing everything they're saying.
Costco, and I buy three cucumbers, and they're all wrapped in individual plastics, and then...
Who's... Someone's talking about cucumbers at Costco.
Ooh, I'm right behind you in Costco, I go.
Okay, thank you, John. So do we have Mr. Tai here as well? Hello? Okay, Mr. Tai, would you like to speak? You have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. Here, let me share my slides here as well. You seen my slides?
Yes.
We do.
Great, thank you. Hi, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, Planning Committee, and our neighbors. My name is David Tai, I'm with my wife, Yuting, and our kids. Our designer of this project, Francis, is also on the call. We hate to waste our city's precious resources during this difficult and serious time, but we thank you for taking the time to hear our case. We are grateful to have lived in Cupertino for more than 10 years. We have five children. And much more important than grades and getting into good colleges, we want them to grow up as caring and respectful citizens, just like how our parents taught us to be. Therefore, in this project, in addition to following all the rules and guidelines, we have been courteous and considerate to our neighbors. My dad's health, to the left there, was the main trigger for our addition. He has been a pastor all his life, both in Taiwan and in Baria. He survived an earlier heart attack. About four years ago, doctor informed us his heart was deteriorating quickly. This was a clear call that it's our turn to take good care of my parents. He's had a couple of close episodes these past four years, but thank God, my dad is still with us. And when we started the project four years ago, we thought my dad's time constraint and our budget would be the most challenging, certainly not our neighbors, since these are, there are sizable two-story homes all around us. In fact, we're surrounded immediately by two-story homes on all three sides. Out of courtesy, I did approach the neighbors, explain our motivation and ask for their prayers. I assure them multiple times that we will follow all the city code and guidelines so that it's fair for everyone. Soon after, we were completely shocked when Mr. Huang submitted his letter to the city with signatures he has already gathered. In the following years, we went above and beyond what's required just to accommodate Mr. Huang and Mr. and Mrs. Fang's preferences. We spent a lot of time and money to move the second floor forward, not by a couple of feet, but by 12 feet for them. Doing so also means two of our kids will have to move out of their bedrooms during the construction, which we really didn't want to do. The original plan didn't impact these rooms. They didn't want us to have a balcony with stairs, even though Mr. Huang has a balcony with stairs just four feet away from us. Nevertheless, we still made our balcony much smaller and removed the stairs for them. We also reduced the garage from three-car to a two-car garage. We are replacing the privacy trellis with all the required privacy screenings. We added these privacy trellises, not knowing they needed permit when we first moved in years ago because the neighbors didn't have any privacy screening on their side. In addition, we added a five-foot privacy sidewall on the balcony. We further made other accommodations such as flattening the carport roof that they talked about and also reduced the post width that they wanted. We also agreed to remove a tree, we did, we'd love, in the front yard because the neighbor didn't like it. After the Planning Committee approved our plan last June, we waited four months for Mr. Huang and Mr. and Mrs. Fang to be available for a hearing they requested. At the hearing, the commissioners voted unanimously to reject their appeal, even though they took some videos out of context there. Even so, we further accommodated the neighbors with a balcony railing that's taller than required. Unfortunately, Mr. Huang, Mr. and Mrs. Fang appealed again against the city's decision on our balcony. This time, we waited five months for another hearing they asked for, but weren't available at all for earlier this year. More so than before, the reasons for this appeal are not relevant to the project and are frivolously speculative. We know all along, they simply don't want us to have any additions at all so that they can keep on having their open views across our lot. I hate to belabor the facts, but since they brought them up to set the proper context, we're the only one already living with worse conditions or settings that they've described all these years. Here's Mr. and Mrs. Fang's house to our left. It's a two-story with a lot of windows facing us, three-car garage with more parking in the back, all without any privacy screening. Except for ours on our side. Here is Mr. Huang's house to our right, two stories again with balcony stairs, and even a barbecue grill on the balcony, all just four feet away from us, also without any privacy screening. And here are my kids playing in the yard under the neighbors' balcony and windows. Even though Mr. Huang and Mr. and Mrs. Fang have not done anything about privacy screening on their side all these years, we respected their rights, so we did what we could to make it work. No matter what, we were, we are very grateful to call this our home in Cupertino. It breaks my heart that I have to defend my rights from Mr. Huang and Mr. and Mrs. Fang. This is the total opposite of how I want my relationship with them to be, and I told them this many times. I don't wish my experience with them on anyone, though. What they said about me is just not true, and I find that quite offending. If someone doesn't like a person turning right on a red light next to their house, can they gather some signatures and ask the police to start handing out tickets just to that one person while they and everyone else keep on turning right at the red light before the rule is changed? Mr. Huang has a balcony now with stairs just four feet from us, without any privacy screening. I cannot understand why anyone reasonable can think this balcony, which no longer meets today's code, is okay today, yes, it's grandfathered in now, while our proposed balcony, which exceeds all current code, more than 15 feet away and more than, and we're 16 feet away from the back, from anyone really, with all the required privacy screening and more, should not be okay. I took a quick walk, actually, two, three blocks just around our houses earlier this year, and just from what I could see from the street, there are certainly many balconies in all shape and sizes in both old and new constructions, including Mr. Huang's, just four feet away from us. We should not be the only one paralyzed nor discriminated against to a stricter balcony rule than everyone else now in Cupertino because we have these two particular neighbors, and especially when one has a balcony himself. One of the nice houses and great schools, by far what makes a good neighborhood is its people, especially during this very difficult time. And we will continue to do our part to be good neighbors and teach our kids to do so. I pray Mr. Huang and Mr. and Mrs. Fang will be willing to do the same by starting to collaborate with us instead. To the end, I want to propose that we all pitch in for a seven- or eight-foot fence. To the end, I want to propose that we all pitch in for a seven- or eight-foot fence between us to add more privacy and ask our neighbors respectfully to also add some privacy screening on their side of the fence, since they and we all are so concerned about each other's privacy. While we are sympathetic and deeply concerned about Mr. Huang and Mr. and Mrs. Feng's health conditions, well-being, and the horrible shootings in Orinda that they brought up in their appeal, these are not relevant to our project at hand. I have a full house, as you can see already, with my youngest only four years old, needing to go to the local schools for many years to come. We have no intention of renting the house, nor are one of the rooms or two of the rooms out to others or tutoring other kids in our house like our neighbors. My offer to Mr. Huang and Mr. and Mrs. Feng again about getting together to share and pray about our life stress still stand, but we cannot be responsible for their thinking and choices. What's relevant, important is our balcony does not only meet, but it exceeds on all sides all the requirements. Furthermore, we've already made so many accommodations for our neighbors' preferences over the last three years. We do not want to be penalized by a stricter balcony code than anyone else in the city. Therefore, we urge the City Council to reject the appeal, just like the commissioners did, and ask that we all put pitch in for a seven, eight-foot fence, and the neighbors can add some, any would be very helpful, privacy screening on their side of the fence as well, since privacy is a big concern. Thank you for your time, and I thank God, I want to thank God for all the frontline heroes during this special time, difficult time, and hope everyone continue to be well during this difficult time.
Okay, thank you. That was exactly 10 minutes. So can we, Madam City Clerk, have there been any speaker cars on this? Anyone requesting to speak other than who we've already heard?
I have no emailed comments and I see no raised hands.
Okay, great. Then we can bring it back to City Council and would anyone like to speak on this? I don't see. Oh, John, welcome.
So perhaps a little clarification from the Planning Department. Maybe you can put back the top view slide that has all the privacy screening plants, trees? Can they bring that slide back?
Yes, I will have it up in one second with the privacy plantings?
Yes.
Right.
So when we saw the pictures that were put up about the actual, it shows the vehicles travel beside the house to get to the garage in the back. And, you know, I want to be sure I understand what, you know, what the situation is. So when we look at those photographs, we see concrete that essentially goes all the way up to the fence for the vehicles to come and go along the side of the house, and that's where I get confused here. When I see these vehicles in this top view, the trees that are required for, now is that required? The other houses don't have privacy protection, but I believe the city ordinance requires for any upstairs where it's, the person on the second floor can see the neighbor's house. If the window is below 52 inches, I think, then there's required to be privacy planting. Is that required on these houses? Because we're not seeing it on the other houses now. What are we conveying in this picture? Is this a requirement or was this just a picture?
Privacy screening materials in the form of shrubs or trees from our city-approved list. They are required for any new and/or modified second-story windows with a window sill height less than five feet from finished floor or second-story balconies with views into adjacent yards. So.
Councilmember Willie, you're muted.
Oh, sorry, I muted him because I was hearing all the background noise from his children.
Okay, whoops. Keep that picture, yeah, keep that picture up. So those trees that the homeowners have to choose from are evergreens. And correct me if I'm incorrect on any of these few from the Planning Department, but they're evergreens and they have to be of a variety that are going to essentially grow to be two stories tall. So they're going to be fairly large. So I'm wondering, you know, I see this picture here, but those trees are going to have to be far enough from the fence so that they're going to be able to mature to a point where they're going to be able to get to that privacy protection height. But how is that going to work with being able to get cars back and forth? And I believe the privacy protection trees are actually going to have to be recorded on the deed to the property so that it's not something that somebody can hope to plant. It has to be planted before the project is signed off, and that includes recording it on the deed of the property, so they will have to be there forever. And so I'm just wondering, how are the cars going to get in and out? Was that figured out if this is the rule? Can you provide that clarification?
Sure. So you got a few points. One point, you are correct. The privacy trees and shrubs will be protected for the life of the property through a covenant. The covenant is required prior to final building sign-off. So the property owner will be required to record a covenant with the county protecting all trees or shrubs considered privacy trees. In terms of the actual planting of the trees, the landscape plan is still subject to change, as you saw from the Planning Commission's revisions to the resolution. We are looking at different privacy screening materials, especially along the east side of the property. However, we are looking at planters for, to kind of that driveway area. Does that answer your question?
When you say planters, so are you saying, suggesting that those trees are not in the ground?
It'll likely be a cutout of the, of the.
For trees to get to the height needed for the privacy protection, you know, a single-story tree is not going to block the viewing of other people's yards from the second story. So they have to be large enough for that. And if you say that they're going to, you know, I hear the word planter. To me, that's one of the redwood wine barrel type things, but that's not going to be sufficient for a two-story tree.
Right. So the trees, there are two parts to it. One, they will be required to be planted in the ground and protected for the life of the property. And two, they will be required to meet the city's privacy screening requirements, one of which is height. So of our city-approved privacy screening materials, the height ranges anywhere from 15 feet to 80 feet, depending on the species. So we would not approve of any alternative planting material that wouldn't meet that requirement.
Okay, I muted you just because of all the noise. I need to un, you need to unmute yourself, John. Okay, there you go.
So, you know, I just want to be sure that, you know, we kind of understand all the important points. And so to me, that's very important. I'm not sure how vehicles are going to get around the trees to turn into the parking spaces in the back, but I'll leave that to the Planning Department. I'm a little bit concerned about the size. Of course, I'm concerned about the neighbor's balcony also, and apparently it's grandfathered in. I'm not sure if that was before it was annexed or something like that. But I think from the slide we saw that the balcony is about 280 square feet.
Correct, approximately.
Yeah. And so when a balcony is fairly normal size, I'm not sure that that's the right verbiage, but if it was about 70, 80, 90, even 100 square feet, you're kind of limited in terms of the number of people that can be gathering, talking, you know, having music. And as that space gets bigger and bigger, the gathering can get bigger and bigger. And now it's more of a birthday party celebration or something. So I am concerned. I really want to understand both sides, you know, and the property owner conforming to R1, I think, is really great. I think Planning Commissioner Huang said, you know, we probably need to make a change to our balcony or to our R1 code to address balconies. I mean, when we start adding that much, you know, 280 square feet of balcony, and that could entail, you know, supporting big parties up there. So I'm concerned about that, but I think I'll make that recommendation to the Planning Department that they need to go and do that. But I do feel that, you know, 280 square feet of balcony is kind of a challenge for the neighbors. You know, it's a living structure, the noise is contained. Yes, you can open the windows, you can open the doors, but the noise, the activity and stuff is really going to be within that echo chamber inside, not flowing out. Whereas a balcony, all the noise is going to be affecting the adjacent ones. So I say that to the building owner to realize that it's a scary situation for the neighbors to have spaces elevated that conceivably, and maybe not by his use or his family, but by a subsequent buyer of the house, especially if the house was ever sold to somebody who turned it into a short-term rental. And we see on TV what happens with short-term rentals. So I want, you know, both the property owner and the neighbors to understand, I'm very concerned. But I think we really do have to adhere to our R1 ordinance. If it truly meets, it did look like it had its positive that it was 17 feet on one side to the fence and 18 feet on the other side, roughly plus or minus a foot or two. And so that, that at least, you know, that's essentially the length of a regular car garage. It's usually 20 feet by 20 feet. So. So those are my, well, probably the most important question. If it meets all the R1 requirements, do we have the authority to deny it? And so that's probably the most important question. It seems like what I read is that the Planning Department did approve it, even though we saw the recordings from the Planning Department where the Planning Commissioners were really challenged by this. So if it meets all the R1 requirements, can it be denied is the final question?
Okay, yeah, thank you, John. Yeah, I actually had the exact same question as John. I mean, based on some of the presentations, I would probably vote to deny it. But do we have that authority because it meets all the requirements? Is there any discretion here? Heather or the Planning Department, who can answer?
Thank you, Mayor. I could go ahead and answer. So in order to deny the project, you would need evidence and in findings that the project does not meet the required findings for a minor residential permit. And those are in the Cupertino Municipal Code 928140 and are also in the resolution, the draft resolution before you. And so the Planning Commission and the Community Development Director found that because it meets the requirements in the code and the circumstances of this case, that those findings could be made. I will not say you do not have the discretion to deny in any situation if the project meets the minimum requirements of the code. But you, in order to deny, you would need to find that there are circumstances where you cannot make the findings that allow you to approve the project. So there is some discretion, but it needs to be based on evidence that the project is injurious or is not harmonious in scale with the general neighborhood. And again, I would point you to the findings in the draft resolution.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, does anyone else have their hand raised to speak on this?
How do I, excuse me, how can I raise hands? I'm not sure how. This is Cindy? Yeah, how?
No, you cannot.
I cannot, huh?
No, because you already spoke.
I haven't, well, I have a, I want to raise hand. Can I raise?
I, Madam Clerk, you might, or perhaps the Community Development Director could, is that there is an opportunity for the appellants to respond for three minutes usually in our hearing procedures, if you would like to allow that.
Okay, so before you respond, sure, welcome. Who is speaking? Eric and Cindy?
Cindy Fang.
Okay, welcome, Cindy.
Slide again because on the code, on the city code, Elizabeth, can you put up the slide? Can we share our slide again? There's a code in there.
Right, you have three minutes. So yeah, turn the slide and then I will start the timer.
Yeah, Elizabeth, can you put up the slide, the code?
Okay, hold on, it's coming.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, where is the code? Sorry, we need to find the code first, okay, the city code.
Is that chapter 19.28?
Okay.
Yeah, all these are code. It's the identity with neighborhood, lighting the air with neighborhood, all this compared. It's always the neighborhood and community. Everything we talk about, it has to match with the community. It's not just by itself. And next one, Elizabeth, please. The next slide. And so these are minor residential permit finding. All these are, you can see the, it's everything we talk about. The red must match with the green, the purple. See, all this visual adjoining property and all this code with A, B, C, D, this is D. Am I have another one? Yeah, this is another one, minor residential. This is A, B. I have a three slide about code, all talking about guideline must connect it with the neighborhood. It's not just by itself, must consider about all the community and adjoining property. So I, and for myself, my neighbor only have 150 feet and I have 200 feet. And I can leave 20, but then I will be blocking all my neighbor on the left side. So I line up with my neighbor on the left side, so I leave 90 feet on my real setback because that matched the code. So I believe the code number must. So I believe the code number must match with the guideline together. It's not just looking at the code because everybody lot size is different, especially in, in Munda Vista. Some neighbor have five or six or seven neighborhoods surrounding it. We cannot just look at the number, not consider about the neighborhood. So when I build my house, my neighbor left and right already new house. And I, I, I can build longer, but I, I build shorter. So I, I think that's fair to, to the neighbor and it's really match the code too. Because I need to consider my neighbor, my neighborhood and community too. So I, I, I think I have three slide of, of the, the, the city codes, all talking about you need to consider about your neighbor, your neighbor, your community. It's not your, yourself. And all he's changed, he has done, eh, it's not, eh, address what we need. We say it's not to block on the back. And your, your, the, the balcony was 520 before. Now even they cut it smaller, but still huge, we rather than he put it in the front, but not on the back, looking at everybody backyard and, and houses. Especially the, the neighborhood is nobody put on the back and blocking everyone and, and see everybody's house. So that's, that's our main reason. If they change as what we said, then the house is already built. I'm sorry, I'm not in US. So I, I'm overseas right now.
No, that's fine. Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Yeah, 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 okay. So those are all the code.
Right, we see them. Thank you. So.
Yeah, so over 64 people around us to sign to oppose. Yeah.
So, okay, that, that's, uh, yeah, that's your three minutes, uh, response.
Okay, I'm done. Yeah.
Okay. So Heather, yeah, I, I kind of had the same question as John. It's the problem I have is a project can meet the R1 requirements, but it can still violate all these guidelines about being disproportionately larger and not compatible with the neighborhood. So, I mean, are those grounds, are the guidelines grounds to deny something? Or the fact that it's, meets all the R1 requirements means we can't deny it?
I believe by the guidelines, you're referring to the findings required to be made to approve the minor residential permit, which is the subject of the appeal here. And so is, is that what you're referring to?
Right, I mean, I, I'm reading this two-story guidelines about, you know, new construction should not be disproportionately larger than or out of scale with the neighborhood pattern. So.
I'm sorry, it, it, maybe Erica, can you let me know what guidelines the mayor's referring to?
It's chapter 9.28, um, single-family residential R1 zones and.
Ah, yes.
The slide here.
The requirements for, for residential constru- construction and residential zones.
Right.
Yes.
Those are the guidelines for the, for two-story. I, just as a point, um, I believe that this appeal is only for the balcony rather than two-story portion.
Right, okay, that, yeah, that, that's true. Okay. Sorry, Leon, you had, had your hand raised.
And, and may it, just as a point of order, could I suggest that we, if the, if the appellants have had their response, that we close the public hearing, um, the public con- portion and then move on to council deliberations?
Okay, sorry, okay. All right, so let's close the public hearing and now, now move on. And I think Leon, you had your hand raised to speak, so, so go ahead.
Okay.
I'll mute myself.
So this project meets the R1 code, but do you mean it meets the objective standard portion of the R1 code? But the other portion, discretionary portion are the ones that they are contesting? That they don't think it, it's harmonious with the neighbor? And so these are the standards that one person think it meets, the other person think it doesn't because it's not clear? Is that the ones?
That, that is one way to look at it. And I will note that the finding is that the proposed project is harmonious in scale and design with the general neighborhood. So it's not specific to adjacent neighborhood, but to the neighborhood in general.
The finding of the, whose finding?
The, the findings to approve the minor residential permit.
Oh, so if, if we approve this permit, that means we agree that it's harmonious to the neighborhood?
Yes.
But maybe not the neighbor?
It, it's, the requirement is the general neighborhood. So the neighborhood as a whole, that it's compatible with, with the houses in that neighborhood.
Okay. And so, um, the parent letters mentioned that initially they learned about this because they have to sign a release of protective trees, uh, form. So are they still required to sign that form? What does that, that form mean? It, it's not mentioned in the staff report?
I'll turn that over to your planning staff.
Thank you. Um, so the.
Do they not require that anymore?
That form is not required to be signed by any property owner. It is an option to waive, um, privacy screening materials only if the adjacent property owner agrees to sign it. So it's an alternative.
So right now they are not waiving that, uh, protective screening. So we have, so right now the permit include protective screening that's required, right?
Correct. It is a condition of approval that the property owner provides screening measures. So the privacy shrubs of trees.
And so planning commission recommendation also include 45, 48 feet of railing or wall on the balcony?
48 inches, correct.
Forty-eight inches, yeah. So what does that look like? 48 inches on top of the existing railing? Or just 48 inches from the ground?
So 48 inches from the finished floor of the balcony. And that, that's required prior to building permit issuance. So I believe that building code currently requires, um, 42 inches. My understanding, so planning commission, um, they, they asked that it be increased by an additional six inches. And just as a point of clarification, the balcony is off of the master bedroom or the master suite than being accessible from, say, a family room.
So 48 feet is really not that tall for privacy screening, right?
48 inches.
Forty-eight inches.
Yes.
Forty-eight inches is not that, uh, high. So.
Right, however, we, we typically do not, um, have that requirement of the screening room.
What, what other possible privacy screenings could there be?
So they are required to do, to install privacy plantings.
But those are between property lines, not the second store balcony, they can still see, uh, other people's backyard, right? I think that's their main concern.
So, so that is the purpose of our requirement for privacy screening. So as I mentioned, we have a, a list of evergreen trees that are specifically, um, picked out by, by an arborist. And they, they're specific trees that will provide, uh, partial screening and trees that will grow up to about 20 feet tall. So.
So, uh, in between the property, this privacy, these trees will be required and recorded in the co- covenant?
That's correct. Yes.
And in case these trees don't, are not healthy or not, don't grow up, what happens?
So they are considered protected trees. So, um, if ever there's an instance where they need to be removed or, you know, in the case that they die, they do need to be, uh, replaced by similar species.
Okay. So they cannot even be removed to say if someone built an ADU?
No.
These are protected.
They, they are protected trees. So they would be required to be replaced unless, uh, you know, in the future, said property, adjacent property owner chooses to sign the waiver.
Do, do it, does it say how far apart they are so that they form a proper screening?
Correct. We, it depends on the species that they ultimately choose. But the city does have requirements for maximum planting distance. And that's based off the canopy or the spread.
Yeah. Okay. So the applicant, um, I think they have, seems to be they have done a lot, but they, they are willing to reduce the size of the balcony to maybe reduce the group, the, the big, the number of people that might gather there.
Okay.
I think that would be a question for the applicant.
Right. Okay, um, Hugh, you have your, um, hand raised?
Um, just as a point of clarification, I just wanted to, um, address a few questions that have come up during different council members. So the applicant is, uh, removing certain portions of the existing driveway in order to allow the privacy trees to be planted in the ground. That is shown on several of the sheets in the plan set. While keeping enough backup distance for the garage and for the cars to exit. And, and they're adding, uh, a little bit of a driveway on the other side where they're removing concrete from in order to allow the cars to move back and forth. That was just one, uh, point of clarification that I wanted to know. And, um, if, um, you know, uh, one of the other things that, uh, I think Erica kind of touched upon was this balcony is, um, off of, uh, private space. It is not off of common space, such as a family room or any other shared spaces. So the, um, the possibility of gathering is definitely lower. And it is also not an access point to the second floor, such as in the case of the neighbor. So, um, that kind of reduces the, uh, chances of having larger gatherings over there. In addition, the planning commission required the 48-inch, um, uh, screening to serve as an additional screening in addition to the protective that the applicant will be required to pu- uh, to put in, to plant. But as you asked, um, Councilmember Chow, those trees are, the spacing on those trees is determined, is kind of identified in the ord- uh, in the, the, um, the tree list that has been picked out by the arborists depending on species. For example, if the applicant chooses to plant, um, Italian cypresses or those, those have sma- um, smaller, uh, distances between the trees versus if they planted some larger trees. And it depends on how much planting room they have. And, um, you know, the kind of tree that they pick will depend which plant, uh, planting room they have. So just wanted to address some of those and happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, so I think, um, as Heather pointed out, the only thing we are deciding here is the balcony. We're not deciding whether the rest of the project is good or bad. Is that an accurate statement?
That's right. The app, the appellants did not appeal the second story portion, which is the living space. They only appealed the balcony portion.
I see. Okay. Um, so did any other council members, uh, raise their hand to wish to, anyone else wish to speak? John spoke, Leon spoke. What about, uh, Darcy and Rod? Do you have anything to add? Are you still here?
Uh, yes, I'm here. All right, I guess I'll delve into it. Um, so, okay, may I speak, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go.
Okay, um, so it looks like we're looking at, uh, Municipal Code 19.28.140 and findings. To me, now we're looking at two subsections here. There's, uh, subsection A, minor residential permit findings. And subsection C, residential design review findings. And, um, please feel free, anyone with some legal chops to, to interrupt me and correct me if I'm, if I'm going astray here.
Councilor Vice Mayor Paul only subsection As issue in this appeal.
Okay, okay. Great. So we're looking at minor residential permit findings and not residential design review findings. Uh, which is fine because the standards I was looking at are actually, I think they might be verbatim, um, identical. So just for the benefit of the public, um, under subsection A, you've got four reasons. Number one is the project is consistent with the Cupertino general plan, any applicable specific plans, zoning ordinances, and the purposes of this title. I trust our city staff in this regard, um, and I'm going to take at face value their as well as backed up by, you know, documentation and evaluation, of course, that it is consistent. Uh, number two is the granting of a permit will not result in a condition that is detrimental or injury. Probably improvements in the facility, not industrialized, hopefully. The specific, uh, type of, uh, that would have been invoked. I, I didn't hear that. Uh, numbers three and four are the ones that I think, um, we need to contend with here. Number three being the proposed project is, is harmonious in scale and design with the general neighborhood. So I guess at this point, one of the things that you need to do when making the finding is to evaluate what your standard is. Uh, and the standard here is, um, harmonious in scale and design with the, uh, general neighborhood. So I, I think that there are probably at least two items we could be considering on a broad-based basis with regard to that harmony. And one is, uh, whether it's compliant with, um, municipal code, um, because of course that, that should be defining the standard. And then we go back to, uh, sub, subsection one here. Uh, and it seems like it is. And the second standard, uh, I think is probably a bit more subjective. But the fact that this language is in here, um, I think can motivate the, the discussion in general as to whether that harmony exists on, on somewhat of a more subjective, um, basis. Uh, I, I do note that it is true that the adjoining neighbors do seem to have, at least one of them seems to have a balcony, I think, both of them. And that there were views, uh, going into the backyard. Uh, I, I am compelled with regard to, uh, the idea that uh, the applicant is, uh, within its balance with respect to being able to, uh, build this space, uh, that's under contention right now. I think that if, and I, I, and I agree with our planning commission that if there are issues with our municipal code in terms of, of building, um, that type of a size of, uh, a balcony, then we should go back, uh, and visit the municipal code. But I also think that in the spirit of fairness to, uh, the applicant and applicants to this point, there should be an expectation of, um, of, of what they are and are not allowed to do. So I, on the balance of it, and looking at the equities as well, I tend to think that this particular item, uh, although close, uh, is something that I, I can see as being acceptable within this, um, within this classification. Now, looking at the fourth item, uh, it states, uh, adverse visual impacts on adjoining properties have been reasonably mitigated. And I think this is a pretty interesting one because, uh, we actually do have a comparative standard. Um, and I'm not citing it for the purpose of applying it. Um, but I'm citing it for the purpose of comparison. Under residential design review findings, which is, uh, subsection C, adverse visual impacts are under, uh, sub-subsection five, where that standard, um, no, that's the same standard. Hold on. Uh, so it would actually be D, uh, residential design review findings, uh, R1A zone. And so that's a different standard. And that standard reads, quote, significant adverse visual and privacy impacts as viewed from adjoining properties have been mitigated to the maximum extent possible. And so, I mean, to me, that tells me that there are, uh, there's a more stringent standard out there than what the one we're asking, uh, being asked to apply here is, which is that they have been reasonably mitigated. So reasonable mitigation, uh, to me, sounds like something that is not as strict or stringent as, uh, a requirement that, uh, mitigation be, uh, uh, a requirement that, uh, mitigation, uh, be, uh, made to the maximum extent possible. So so I think, I think it really comes down to this, uh, at least for me. Um, has there been reasonable mitigation that have occurred, that that has occurred uh, with regard to what our staff is, uh, working with the applicant and um, by extension, the neighbors to try to ensure that there is a a at least some protection of of privacy there. I, you know, I I am very sympathetic with the notion that, uh, privacy is being intruded on. I think it's extremely important, uh, especially in in our society, uh, that we respect it. Um, a- at the same time, there have been efforts made to try to preserve that privacy. Uh, and I would ask that the neighbors, um, recognize and acknowledge the fact that this this particular family does seem to have a point that for a number of years, um, they were able to be observed from their adjoining neighbors' yards. Uh, and combined with the fact that we do have municipal code allowances, it seems that, you know, and I and I hate to turn this into, um, eh, kind of, uh, a competitive process. I I really, I I hope that you don't engage in that either overtly or, you know, kind of non-overtly. But I I I think if if the, if that applicant has that allowance, uh, then we should be examining the allowance, uh, after we have set those expectations. Um, so I, you know, looking at the equities, looking at the efforts made to try to protect, um, the the view, uh, I I would tend to go more towards the idea of of denying the appeal. Uh, I'm I'm still open to listening to what other, uh, members of council have to say about this particular, um, this particular topic. Or if there were others among the standards that I cited that, uh, warrant some review. But, um, those are my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rod, you have anything? On mute.
Thank you. You know, uh, I I know these, uh, decisions are difficult and we at times have opened up our our one ordinance to make changes and perhaps it's warranted. But I think the case here is using the best, uh, judgment of city staff and interpreting the ordinance we have. They, uh, as well as the planning commission have said that this project is compliant. And therefore, I think we have to, uh, deny, uh, the appeal. I think that, um, you know, we we are living, I I see how long these lots are and how skinny they are. And I get that, uh, people may have frustrations when when changes come about and they don't seem fair. But I see no, uh, course of action other than, uh, deny the appeal, upholding the planning commission's decision to approve the application in accordance with the draft resolution, and I will so move.
Okay, um, I just want to say, Darcy mentioned one thing about competitiveness or a- and I this will probably start something where other people decide, hey, I'm going to extend my house to the maximum FAR towards the back and put in a balcony as well. So, um, I wish the applicant would, um, change their mind, but we don't really have any grounds, um, to, uh, do anything but deny the appeal. So Rod, I will second your motion.
I do have a question following up, um, with what Darcy is saying. So, um, you mentioned that under residential design review findings, um, that's where we have this language that where the adjoining property, the impact, visual impact and privacy impact have to be mitigated to the maximum intent possible. And we are saying this doesn't apply here, why? Isn't this part of the residential property? So if someone, um, built a house which, um, would use this, uh, this code to mitigate the maximum extent possible, and then they add a balcony, then the balcony doesn't, this doesn't apply? I don't understand.
That part, that permit was not appealed. So the, your scope of your appellate authority is to the items that were appealed.
Right, we're only talking about the balcony. If if the rest of the project had been appealed, this might be a very different discussion.
So was there a permit for the rest of the project?
Well, let me, let me jump in here.
Wouldn't this rule apply to the balcony permit too?
No, it doesn't.
Balcony is a part of the rest of the project.
Let Darcy respond.
Right, I mean, if you look at the code and it's nineteen, uh, point twenty-eight, point one forty, I think this actually would, i- i- if it did apply, if what you're saying did apply, it would fall under C, residential design review findings, not D, which is residential design review findings, R one A zone. I don't think we're in an R one A zone. And it's not one zone that applies the more more strict standard of the maximum extent possible.
Wait, you mean the key is this is not R one A zone? So where is R one A zone?
That's a good question. I I think you should ask planning or the city attorney's office that.
I'll be happy to answer that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Hugh.
Um, so the, um, the findings for the R one A zone, uh, i- if I might give you a little bit of history. The R one A zone was designated as such by the residents that live in the R one A zone. Um, they are on Randy and, uh, Randy Lane that back onto the Apple property. So there's two streets there.
Right.
The the two block. Um, I'm sorry, the two blocks that comprise the R ones A A zone and they back up on the Apple, uh, Infinite Loop campus. And it's Randy Lane and I I, off the top of my head, I can't remember the other lane. Um, and the, uh, findings for that was, um, determined in, uh, in concert with the neighbors that lived there at the time. And they held themselves to a higher standard of review. In fact, their, uh, development standards are a little bit more stringent than, uh, they are as they're applied in other, uh, places in the city. Um, they designated themselves as a, uh, the dash A stands for almost like an ag- agricultural, like it was a cross between R one and agricultural zone. So they they impose, self-impose certain higher standards on themselves. However, this particular property in question is, I believe, in the R one seven point five zoning district in Montevista. And so this, uh, the standard that, um, Councilmember Paul pointed to does not apply to this. All that applies is that adverse visual impacts on adjoining properties have been reasonably mitigated. And that's the normal standard of review that has been a- applied to uh, both two-story additions and to balconies since these permits have been in place.
Okay, so the key is now which permit is applied here or what type of appeal? The key is the zone they are located in. So the more stringent, uh, re- standard didn't, doesn't apply. So, uh, resident, uh, area, maybe the whole, their whole neighborhood? If they don't want this to happen again, can they apply to change the standard for their entire neighborhood? Like the A one, R one A zone or R one AB?
Correct, they could, they could certainly. Um, we do have a single-story overlay process, which if people don't want to have two-story buildings be in their, uh, community, uh, a a neighborhood could get together to come, uh, to apply that they, as different standards be developed for their neighborhood, uh, which they would self-impose on themselves.
Then there won't be a competition.
Correct.
Okay, Rod, you made the motion and I seconded it.
I
So, oh.
I have had my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, um, I'm a little confused by the last statement by Hugh. So does that mean the being harmonious in scale does not apply here?
No, that standard still does apply. It's the one that was under discussion does not apply.
Okay, so I would like to, uh, make a motion then that if it, you know, under the requirement of it being harmonious in scale and there are no huge decks, I'd like to make the motion that we allow the deck to protrude ten feet from the current structure. And that then, in my view, would be harmonious in scale with the rest of the houses in that area. Because we're talking about a two hundred and eighty-plus square foot deck which is extending pretty far back into the yard. And if we just say harmonious in scale relative to the other houses and ten feet from the existing structure, okay. And then if the house is, uh, twenty feet wide, it it may be wider than that. Um, but if it's twenty feet wide, then it can go out by ten feet. You're still going to get two hundred rather than two eighty.
Well, I mean, I don't think we're redesigning it now. It, um, if you want to uphold.
Harmonious in scale is all I'm trying to get at.
Okay. So there's a vote and a second on Rod's motion. Um, so can we call the question and have a vote, Kirsten?
Certainly. Councilmember Chow?
She's muted.
Well, so, so John proposed a motion, right?
Nobody seconded it.
Do we need to first ask if anyone wants to second the?
Right, nobody, nobody seconded it. I I don't even think we can start doing that here. We're trying to redesign the balcony where what we're being called on to do is to either uphold the appeal or deny the appeal.
So can we add the more stringent, uh, um, standard just so that, uh, to reduce the size of the balcony? Are we allowed to do that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, or, um, but I think our, what we're doing here is if we don't like that balcony, we would deny the appeal. I mean, we would uphold the appeal and then see what consequences happened as a result of that, um, of upholding the appeal. I mean, it could, I mean, wh- what could happen if we upheld the appeal?
You could add additional conditions of approval. You could, you could deny the appeal and impose additional conditions of approval. But I'm, I would refer also to Community Development Director for any comments on that approach.
Which is what?
I'm sorry, your, uh, representative from the community development department.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, answer that question?
Sure.
Um, you could certainly modify or propose, uh, impose additional conditions if, uh, you so choose to reduce the scope of the balcony.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Leon, uh, sorry, I muted you, so Hugh could talk, so, um.
Okay. So, so I think planning commission did that also, right? So they denied the appeal but added a condition. So we, it's possible we can, um, deny the appeal but then ask the balcony to be reduced in size. Because I think the the issue is our code unfortunately says it needs to be harmonious in scale in the general neighborhood. That means, like Darcy mentioned, one person have this size of a balcony, another person can can have three hundred square foot because then it's gen- it will be in that general neighborhood. Then the next person would have four hundred square foot. It will be in that general neighborhood. And then there is no limit. So maybe we can then try, it shouldn't affect how much they can enjoy the balcony. Especially now that it's limited, uh, access to a bedroom, right?
Correct. Yeah, see, a- a- and I would, sorry, let me start my video. I would agree that the, um, balcony is quite excessive in size as well. I I didn't come prepared to start deciding what size the balcony should be. Um, so I I really don't have any input on that. Now, John, what?
But we have the discretion to do that here, right, do we?
Well, I mean, I guess we have the discretion to limit, to impose additional conditions is what I was told.
If you find that the findings can't be made based on the project as proposed.
I need to understand John's proposal a little more. What do you mean by extending ten foot? How big the balcony would be with that requirement?
Well, I I tried to think of what's the best way to describe, uh, the balcony to keep it within a harmonious scale. And three hundred is, you know, three quarters of a two-car garage. And so, well, what if we brought it down to a, uh, two-car garage? And that would be ten by twenty. And so I said, well, one way would be to say, limit the, uh, size of the balcony to either a hundred and fifty or two hundred square feet to be in size and harmonious scale with the community. Or make it even simpler and just say ten feet from the existing structure. And ten feet is still pretty good size. I mean, that's two and a half, four by eight sheets of plywood extending out.
Right now, it's twenty by thirteen, twenty point five feet by thirteen feet. I don't know which, what's the dimension, twenty feet is, uh, width along this. So then ten feet will be, you are just reducing from thirteen to ten feet?
If you were to, if you, if you were to put the picture, the top view picture that we had, then we could. I I agree with Mayor Sharp that we don't want to be, uh, redesigning it for him. Just giving him, uh, a requirement to keep it within harmonious scale, uh, of the, uh, houses in the area.
Because the neighbor does have a balcony, but it's much smaller. So it's reasonable to keep it in a reasonable harmonious size scale. And, but I I won't, I need to understand the dimension of the balcony so I can understand what ten feet means.
Would you like me to share the screen? Get the picture back up there?
Yeah, I think what, if I may, I think what, uh, Councilmember Willie was attempting to do by saying ten feet from that house was to, uh, somehow limit the size of the balcony to approximately two hundred square feet. Is that right, Councilmember Willie?
Essentially, somewhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred, uh, uh, square feet. Mm-hmm.
I might suggest to council that if you want to just give that requirement, that might work.
Uh, sorry, I didn't hear you, Deb. You were talked over.
I said, so I would suggest to council that if you want to, uh, give that requirement to the homeowner that you could do it in that simple fashion and then move on.
So according to, I think the balcony is twenty by thirteen feet, give and take. So ten feet would make it about twenty, two hundred square foot, right?
Right.
Is that more reasonable?
I think that's the point, Councilmember Willie was.
To clarify, would it be ten feet in depth? So approximately where the black line is now on the screen?
Uh, that's what I, that's what I thought John meant.
Yeah.
You know, and I tend to agree, you know, the applicant mentioned, you know, the, that his parents were gonna be moving in and, or his father and, you know, the number of children. And, you know, a smaller balcony should not affect any of that, um, in terms of, uh, livability of the rest of the house, which we're not discussing here. So I I don't know how Darcy feels about this, um.
So I, then I second John's more motion. Is that a replacement motion or how is, how is that?
It, it would just be a second motion and I, it probably should be clarified before it's voted on.
So it would vote on John's motion first.
And so does this make it easier if we just say essentially half of what's there now, so a hundred and fifty square feet would make it harmonious in scale with the surrounding houses in that area? A hundred and fifty square feet, I think that's still more than half. And it's still probably more than twice the size of the neighbors', uh.
John, I liked your original proposal about the the ten feet.
Okay, yeah, it works for me.
Prefer it not going all the way back personally. Because I would prefer it not going all the way back, personally.
Okay.
I would like a shorter depth. And, you know, the, the width is fine if it wants to be the whole width of the, whatever it's on top of. But the depth, I think the neighbor is really, you know, objected to the depth, to how far it goes back and the, and the privacy issues that it brings. So it might be a good compromise that will make no one completely happy, but no one completely upset with that limit of 10 feet of depth.
Can I call the question on this?
Sure. So Darcy, did you want to weigh in on this or not? Are we ready to vote on John's motion?
No, I know, I'll just vote on it.
Do you need it clarified, Heather?
I believe it is to deny the appeal with an additional condition of approval to have the balcony not exceed 10 feet in depth with the same proposed width.
Correct. So is the word depth a sufficient description?
Yes, but I could, would ask the planners if they believe that is true.
You're muted, Pew.
My point of clarification is, is it 10 feet in depth and no more than 150 square feet? Or is it 10 feet in depth and limited to the current width? It would only make it 130 feet, give or take.
So, yeah, it's not limited to 150 square feet. So with 10 feet of depth, how wide is it now? It's 13 by 10?
Correct, that's approximately what it is.
I see.
Oh, I thought it's 20 by 13.
It's 20 the other direction. It's 20 feet depth right now and 13 feet wide.
So go to 100.
It's 20 feet depth now, so we are reducing that to 10 feet.
Correct.
10 by 13.
So the deck would now be about 130, 140 feet, 130, 140 square feet.
Wait, it's, then it's smaller than 150 square feet?
Correct, that was my point of clarification.
Oh, I thought it's the other way around.
Yeah, how about 12 feet then?
Yeah, I think smaller than 150 might be too small.
That's about 156, that might be fine.
Yeah, John, would 12 feet be okay there?
Excellent, great, yep.
Well, just to clarify, so I'm reducing from 20 feet in depth to the, what's a backyard, to 12 feet?
Correct, but the width remains the same.
The width remains the same.
Right, okay, so John, is that your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay, so I guess we vote on your motion first to.
Why don't I simply withdraw my motion? Is that?
Okay, great. I mean, Rod, do you think you can be in favor of this too?
Yes.
Great, okay. So we have the motion, do we?
I second, I second, right.
Seconded it. So Kirsten, is it perfectly clear now?
Yes.
Great, so.
We have it.
I guess we're ready to vote now.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. Does anybody need a break? We've gone, we've been going for about three hours now.
Yeah, let's take five minutes.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at 9:45.